It is now. All right, everyone is now six P M. I'd like to get our work session started this evening. I would first like to call on our city planner, Carrie Kneller, to introduce our speakers this evening and talk through our agenda.
Now it is. Okay, so we have, we are really excited. The community development department's really excited to bring this Rock Creek Corridor Plan to you all tonight to consider and ask questions and to kind of talk about and mull over. This is part one of a two-part effort to plan bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the city. The part two of, or part two of this, the bicycle network for the citywide plan. And that will conclude next month. We're going to have an open house on April ninth at Powell Community Center, six to eight P M. You're encouraged to attend that. Tonight, we're going over the details of the Rock Creek Corridor Plan. And we worked with consultants Wilson and Company, Hoxsey Collective, S W T Design, Bike Walk K C and Sing Wing to do this project, which kicked off last July. And it's funded by Mid-America Regional Council's Planning Sustainable Places Program, which we provided a twenty percent local match for to total a hundred thousand dollars for this product, for this project. It covers an area from Woodson to Roland Drive and Johnson Drive to Martway along the Rock Creek Corridor, the Rock Creek Trail Corridor. The whole concept here was to capitalize on the existing east-west connection through Mission in the downtown commercial district, all the way to Mission's east side. It's to build recommendations to promote multimodal transportation, install green infrastructure, safety improvements, support housing and economic development, right in the heart of the city. It's also a key location for public space to support Mission's culture at the Mission Farmer's Market and to lay the groundwork for a linear park along the trail. That will be a place that the entire region will be drawn to. I think it'll be a vibrant, wonderful place for people to come and experience Mission downtown and shop and work and play and live. So this also, you know, undertook a great extensive public engagement process. There's a steering committee made up of Planning Commission members, Sustainability Commission members, Parks and Rec, Tree Board members, council members, Chozy and Loudon were also part of that steering committee, representatives from Mission Project and Down Syndrome Innovations. Not two nonprofits here in Mission were also involved. And residents with specialties in the arts and bike mobility were all on that steering committee. We're also two focus groups made up of business owners and property owners and consultants. Bike Walk K C actually held a great public engagement event called the Walk and Roll. It was last fall on a Saturday morning. People came and either walked or biked the corridor to provide input and to learn more about the project, to talk about what they liked and maybe what they felt like could be opportunities for improvement. We had over forty attendees at that, and it was really a great event. I think it was probably my favorite part of the whole project. It was really fun. So we also had an open house and an online survey as part of that public engagement. Let's see. It was really just a tremendous effort over like an eight-month period of time. And, you know, I hope that this is going to result in a plan that we can take and use as a guide to improve what we already have. It's like a great treasure here in Mission, the Rock Creek Trail. And we're already looking for funding to try to start implement some of these, some of these things that come out of the plan. So and with that, I'm going to hand it over to Drew. He's from Wilson and Company, and he was our project manager for the entire project, and he'll give you kind of more details.
Well, good evening. Excited to be here and get to share with you all the process and the outcome from this planning project in your community. This was a really exciting project when I saw the P S P having this in downtown Mission, an area that's already had a lot of momentum. Being able to think through kind of the possibilities through this P S P program really helps to find all these opportunities between environment, mobility and placemaking in the community. Let's see, what's the slide advanced situation? Awesome. Sweet. Thank you, Justin. So Carrie really walked you through a lot of the details, but I'm going to kind of briefly go over some of the existing conditions and engagement. We're also going to talk about the recommendations, the outcome, and we'll go into some detail on that concept one point two. And then also the Martway Complete Streets alternative. And then talk a little bit about some of the initial implementation and funding ideas that we came up through this process. All right. So with the existing conditions, the study area corridor, as you can see on the screen, starts right at Woodson, near City Hall where we're at, and then extends along the trail to Noll and then continues along all of Martway between Noll and Roland Drive. So really, we looked at around three hundred feet on either side of that corridor, but we considered a lot of the network outside of that area. And then thinking too about connectivity and bicycle connectivity, as Carrie mentioned, that all-city bike plan really will help fold in kind of all of the possibilities there. And, you know, again, with a lot of these locations, these key points, you know, Urban Prairie, you know, the Mission Transit Center, there's a lot of activity going on. There's a lot of momentum already, and so not just for local residents, we're thinking through this process about visitors as well, right? Trail-oriented development. Moving along. So just a brief overview on some of the existing conditions that we uncovered through our analysis, through engagement, through talking with city staff. Transportation, there's, you know, a bit of a lack of connectivity from the trails to other bike lanes. You know, this isn't all on Mission. This is kind of the Johnson County connections, right? Metro Green was something that Mark did, the Regional Planning Agency, and they've identified it some, you know, regional connectivities along stream trail corridors. So we, we looked at some of those connectivity challenges there. Some of the safety risks at crossings. We'll, we'll go into a little bit more on the safety funding that's available right now through Bill. Land development, some large property owners that can be a, you know, pro and a, or an opportunity and a challenge sometimes. With the, the flood zone, so it's an A E flood zone, large flood plain, and, you know, we've understood some of the historical flooding that has occurred. But also thinking about the opportunities through that, you know, we specifically with, with water, you know, we wanted to identify green infrastructure opportunities where some of that water could be captured locally and maybe re-funneled into vegetation like bio swales or, or other green infrastructure. Also with the land use development, having an opportunity for more mixed use that can generate more kind of uses or people having multiple trips or multiple destinations along a trip. And also with the transportation of the trail itself. You know, one of the things that we noticed early on was wayfinding, just some low-hanging fruit there that can really help to leverage the existing assets. Definitely saw with some of the trail ridership numbers. You know, those numbers could be up a lot higher even with just local trips, but also thinking too down the road about more of those kind of destination trips. Yeah, then that connectivity as well. So moving along. So as Carrie mentioned, we had a really awesome walk and roll tour. There was a lot of great input. We heard that, you know, again, wayfinding was a key asset folks were wanting. Also, you know, some of the items like shade and rest stops, things that as you're moving along a trail, you might want to actually make it a destination of itself where you, you know, take a call, have coffee with a friend. Traffic calming. So traffic calming, I'm sure you all are familiar, but essentially it's how do we slow cars down naturally without, you know, necessarily law enforcement being right there. So thinking through that is kind of a passive approach to making things safer. And then even things like dogway stations people brought up. Again, those could be anywhere. In our stakeholder groups, you know, some of the things we heard, art, right? Having art, more of that along the trail. Absolutely, you know, something that makes it feel more of an aesthetic place. And then some of the connections, like formalizing a Maple Street connection. Also, you know, activating Martway. That intersection there, we knew there was a lot of room for improvement, so we took a kind of a special look right there as well. Moving along residential group, we heard, you know, some things about potentially having a cleanup group or wanting to improve specific safety, you know, with lighting. Business group, we heard, I like this comment, you know, like make it cute. We heard that. I just think it kind of made sense, just making things feel more fun, which definitely feels like a mission thing, you know, with Johnson Drive, there's a lot of kind of unique styles of businesses. So leveraging that, wanting more natural congregation spaces, more bike racks, making things more walkable, more livable. So moving into the recommendations. The process for most planning processes, you know, we start with getting the existing conditions. We have a whole technical report, which is in the back of this report with a lot of detail, getting into understanding of utilities, other kind of quantitative measures. And then bringing that data forward into our engagements to kind of dig deeper with the community. As I mentioned with the engagement, we got a lot of ideas that way. Then working with our team, we kind of generated some initial concepts. S W T did a lot of these illustrative drawings and we've kind of refined those along the way. So we then led to having kind of two concepts for the trail. The first one was Rock Creek Park and the second was market in the green. These concepts, they're in the plan. We'll look at kind of the evolution of that. Those move towards kind of this, we call it concept one point two, where we've kind of picked the best of both worlds and merged some of those together. I'd also add that, you know, there's still ideas in those original concepts that could be brought forth independently, and those are listed out in the plan. Additionally, on Martway, a little bit of a different approach. Complete street, you know, looking at the entire road, not just the trail and its surrounding environment. So we had three kind of different approaches. The first was a cycle track, which is where you have two-way bike traffic or bike and ped traffic on the side of a roadway. Or not on the side of a road, but within the roadway on one of the sides. The other alternative was a median, so currently there's no median. And then the other one was just looking at a sidewalk. So based on the voting from our final public open house a couple of months back, we, we ended up with, really it was kind of a big margin from alternative one. I think on the next slide, we can actually see those breakdowns a little bit more. So again, for that, that first or for the trail section, the concept one and two, it was pretty much tied. We had, I think it was about fifty fifty, and then we had another vote at City Hall that made option two actually come forth a little bit more. And I think looking at some of the differences, really, we've kind of worked together with, with the city to hone in on what are the key elements that the city feels like are more implementable based on the cost benefit analysis, which we'll talk about in just a, just a moment. For the and real quick, just going back, thank you. The cycle track, as I mentioned, was like two-thirds of folks were pushing on that. And I think too, when we had kind of feedback, there's some education in explaining what these ideas are. We had our team kind of facilitating those conversations. We, we took a lot of notes of what people kind of reasoning why they liked that versus the other one. And maybe on one of the, the next graphics, I can show you kind of the alignment and how that makes sense a little bit. So move into the next slide. And this one really, I mean, I don't know, I think you guys have screens up there, right? You can see, okay. Is there any way we can pinch to zoom on here? We tried this in a meeting, I think in our open meeting, and it didn't work. But we can give it a shot. Oh, that helps a bit. Perfecto. Maybe just looking at the images first, I can kind of set the stage of what this, this theme is trying to evoke. So you'll see that top right image, this kind of limestone wall. And you'll see this a lot in Kansas and the Flint Hills, these limestone division walls. And we thought be pretty fitting giving the, the Rock Creek name to incorporate some kind of stylistic elements like that. Below, you can see kind of an example of some of this wayfinding, this boulderish rock sign that Sterling Ranch, that's something that kind of was, uh, we evoked in this theme. Also, these kind of soft prairie grasses next to this bike trail. Down a little bit, some of this shade structures, so the shade structure on the bottom right. Folks seem to kind of gravitate around that modern aesthetic, kind of simple, which this kind of reminded me a little bit of Mohawk Park, so I thought that was interesting. And then I'll point out that kind of, you see the kids playing by the water. This was something that came up. We were looking at, you know, an interactive stream potential through this process. Turned out it may not have been as feasible. So kind of a, another approach to that was creating a water fountain where kids, families could kind of approach water, have this interactive stream element without necessarily being in the Rock Creek area. I'm, I'm going to come up here and maybe point out some of these numbers. Actually, I can probably just call out the numbers. So maybe starting at the southwest corner where we're at. So you'll see there's some gateway signage near number eight. It's kind of the beginning of the trail, some soft prairie grasses. Then the trail extends north. And at that point, ten, you'll see off just on the west side of the map near Woodson, kind of a pump track where basically we kind of imagine it could be like a traffic garden, an opportunity for kids to learn how signs work while either walking or on a bike and just kind of have this be a a location where folks can, you know, kind of practice riding a bike. And then just to the, the east of there on Outlook, you'll see there's this raised traffic table with some kind of chicanes that do, do some traffic calming as well as providing some additional parking in that location. As also, there's some kind of green infrastructure too that could be incorporated there with a variety of plantings that you utilize that water coming off the road. Looking just to the east of there, kind of where there's currently some pooling water in that parking area. Incorporating another kind of, you know, water feature that could be, you know, it could be some kind of vegetated area as well. And then with number twelve, kind of a restroom facility. That's something that we heard was, I think, pretty desired throughout the community. And if you have events, also be a great amenity to have. We thought a lot about the location on that one. I think kind of being multipurpose, not totally hidden because you want some eyes on, on that location as well, but not also like totally on the street. Then there's kind of some open space without some vegetation because, you know, we know folks, they like to use the lawn, use the grass. It's not a kind of fully enclosed space, but you will see there's a lot of new vegetation, a lot of new trees, which in that location will help provide some shade for folks walking along Johnson Drive as well or parking their cars. And then looking right at Reeds. So we had in both concepts, some, I'd say kind of major traffic calming in this location. If folks are coming down Reeds, approaching Johnson Drive, you know, there's an opportunity for kind of more collisions and especially with the trail there, it could be kind of confusing if someone's turning in at a high speed off Johnson Drive and may not notice that there's a, a trail crossing there as well. So this was an area where, you know, we thought we could actually close down a roadway and there wouldn't be a huge traffic impact. The traffic volumes are very low at the street and they're all local. So you'll see kind of the south end, we checked for adequate parking, like that's a kind of a hammerhead parking style or for a turnaround for an emergency vehicle, that would be adequate. And then a pedestrian bridge, which would then lead to the trail, so providing kind of this connectivity through the neighborhoods. And then kind of a stone wall too, which kind of blocks that in. Moving a little bit to the east of there, you'll see the shade structure number six, kind of that kind of modern image I showed earlier, as well as that interactive water feature at seven. Let's see, so that kind of like rainbow-ish color, that kind of, let's see, where eight is, that yellow to blue? Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's trying to evoke kind of a flowering native pollinator garden. And you'll see that, that kind of extends along the trail as well as that rock wall that, that bends down. So it's creating some separation from really to kind of enclose this space around the shade structure as well as, you know, creating some visual interest, which leads to more of that cap-fed lawn, you know, which currently is not in play, right, in our design. And yeah, so kind of went through that. Not sure how we're all digesting that. Any thoughts or questions? Pause there. And maybe we can go around and I can dive into any of these with more detail. Yeah, Debbie?
I have a question about Reeds being closed. Would it be closed from the north end? I mean, Johnson Drive, there's just no street left, or how does Reeds Road work?
Yeah, so on that one in particular, so it would be closed right at the apartments, right on the south side of the creek. North, right? So north towards Johnson Drive, that would be closed off.
So there would be no Reeds Road turning on Johnson Drive to the south, is that correct?
In this.
Okay. And then just to follow up with that, where nine is, is kind of an area for emergency vehicles to be able to like turn around. Okay.
That's correct.
I just had a comment. Yeah, after looking at the two proposals, like to me, the major distinguishing characteristic between the two was that that reads closure. And I mostly wanted to chime in and say, if that does get closed, I think that bridge is absolutely critical. As a resident, the notion of not only is my limit, like I've been limited in my access to Johnson Drive, now there's this great park here, but I can't get to it. It was like a non-starter for me as a resident, if I were to live there. So I think that bridge is critical. The other thing I wanted to call out, I know you said that the traffic was minimal there. And just really wanted to reinforce that I think one of the things that really helps Mission not having a major congestion problem. Say we have lots of access points to Johnson Drive and out of neighborhoods. Just wanted to be aware of the fact that when you close one of those off, it's now diverting all that traffic to either Outlook or I guess not even Maple doesn't go through, so it would be all the way to, to Noll. So all that traffic then diverts to those two points, a possible congestion point, wanted to bring it up.
I guess with the police and fire, you know, I, I see what you're saying, but I've watched these trucks try to turn around and it doesn't work out as well.
Sure.
And, and the other way is when I think about these apartments, they're all going to have to go up to Martway to get out. If there was a big emergency or something, I don't know. I don't know how many are in those apartments, how many people physically live there, but that should be something that's considered. And also that Martway, I almost got hit the other day right there. So there's people that speed through there, and so people to be able to get out, I, we would have to think about something. What, what would that look like?
Yeah, and I, I'm trying to remember back to the traffic volume. I want to say it was, it was, I know it was like around or under a hundred vehicles a day, which compared to the rest of the corridor is, you know, under five percent of some of that traffic. So it's, it's fairly minimal. And yeah, you know, access and safety is, is of utmost concern for a city. I totally understand that. The opportunity to protect some of that space and folks who are at the park. It, it may, it could save a life too. So it's a, it's a tough thing to, to evaluate for sure. I think it's creative and certainly pushes the boundaries of what we've looked at before, and I think that's a good thing. I am not as opposed to the idea of closing Reeds at that area. I think it would really activate that space, especially considering that that space is where most of our residents are interacting with Johnson Drive at the market site, most summers anyway. And I think it could really be a statement piece for just a wonderful destination green space going forward. So although I, I think we probably want to look at some more questions that some of my colleagues have brought up, I'm not opposed to the closure of that based on this design because I think it really would create a, like a destination essentially, so.
I could, but the Rock Creek Corridor Master Plan also called for, I believe, Reeds and Outlook to be closed off in that plan, which is what kind of gave us the idea to, to do one of these. You know, we kind of felt like doing both would be a little too much, but to promote that protection, especially on that north side where a lot of people are going to be hanging out and utilizing that space and at the market and everything, that that might actually be more beneficial than it leaves instead of Outlook.
And as like a personal anecdote, my mother-in-law is living on, in the apartment complex that's like on the east side of Reeds, right there, like very bottom corner. And I showed her this plan, and this was something that she was actually really excited about. Especially just being able to like easily walk to the Mission Market during the summer. So like Trent said, I'm definitely interested in the possibility of closing Reeds, especially as you said, Drew, of like safety purposes in a park as well. So yeah, definitely interested in perusing this a little further.
Any other areas to zoom in on? I don't know if I mentioned the shade umbrella structure number three was kind of a mini shade that could, as the sun's setting, provide some shade on the lawn.
I, I'm actually glad you brought that up. Probably most or all of us have like worked the market at some point. And it can be excruciatingly hot. So just even just walking around it. So any opportunity, you're looking at the shade trees that you've got there, the shade umbrellas, just any opportunity to allow folks to just get a respite from how brutally hot the sun is in, in June, July, August is, is great to see.
Justin, were you going to say something?
I'm just going to read the mayor's comment from the chat real quick. She said that, "I like the idea of closing Reeds and making the area more pedestrian friendly and centered on the park. On the pump track, Roland Park has a traffic garden, so I'd like to see some other version of a pump track bike feature here. And the only thing I don't like on the plan is number five about with breaking up the green space with the fitness court."
One adage. You know, we've got several projects pending right now with multiple apartments and multiple people, which accessibility-wise, it's great to have more walking, but the traffic, just like Brian said, the traffic has to go somewhere. So I just think that all needs to be put into, to whatever plan we come up with for a traffic study to look at, you know, how traffic's impacted by that because we're adding like a fifteenth of the population based on those numbers.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, that, that traffic would be brought to Noll or what's the, I guess Metcalf two is the, the next. Trying to, trying to think. What's that? Lamar. Oh, yep, that's the next signalized intersection. Yeah, I'm trying to think if there's any regulations on closing access near an apartment. I don't think there is necessarily, but considering, you know, the I don't think there is necessarily, but considering, you know, the, the trips, um, the parking structure. You know, I think it, it, it would just probably add a bit more demand at, at Noll for, for left turners and right turners. One of the recommendations, which I'll hit on later, is we're looking at kind of Noll and Martway and how that can be improved for safety, capacity. And then, you know, with all the apartments on Martway as well, considering some of those improvements would be good for safety and probably capacity and flow. So that might, might resolve some of that.
The last comment I'll make here too, is just as a landlocked city with not a lot of opportunities for land acquisition, you know, creating green space opportunities are few and far between. And the ability to be able to connect something of this nature vis a vis a closure of Reed Street, for example, would really, I think, be one of our only opportunities to actually be creating green space in this sentiment. So I just would encourage us to continue to think about how accessible and, and special this place could be. You know, with some of the concerns that we're talking about, but I, I think that just given our limitations on how we're creating green space, you know, something like this is, this kind of creativity is how we're going to go about doing that.
Cool. Well, we can move along then if there's nothing else. Okay. So one of the renderings, just showing what that could look like. Uh, this is looking west. You'll see some wayfinding, uh, see that wall and some of the pollinator garden. As long as, as well as some new fencing around the creek, uh, which you couldn't really see on the plan view, but you know, some, maybe something different than a chain link, uh, fence perhaps. Um, and then those trees, and then you can see that shade structure out in the background. So this was the, uh, alternative one that we had about few thirds, folks thinking was two thumbs up. So the trade-off here was adding more kind of shared use space within the roadway. That's low cost, quick build, implementable, fast. So that's what a cycle track can, can do. So this would take out the center turn lane, which would add some more delay for left turning vehicles and for I guess really just for the left turning vehicles. There's, there is the cycle track, uh, that would also be available for like pedestrian space currently on the north side. The sidewalk varies. There's some areas where it's like four feet and then it kind of drops off, uh, where the property line is. We think that, uh, kind of a quick build implementation here to just provide that access on the north side could be a cycle track, which could double us, uh, space for pedestrian. Even if the pedestrian's walking on the sidewalk, just that buffer space away from traffic is a huge safety win. Go into the next slide. This is a plan view of showing where that could be. So again, it's cycle track on the north side. Uh, thinking about also some mid-block crossing locations. There's currently, uh, there's currently, I think, two there, but we're looking at some enhancements there and how those could be beefed up a bit. Uh, and then thinking a little bit too about the wayfinding strategy. Either into the corridor, great place to let people know about the trail, uh, and where they can go. We thought too, a little bit about some of the origin destination communicating out that you can go connect with other locations and then other locations could connect you here. We thought of like QR codes or things that people could snap on their phone because the map is always changing. At least the routes for bike routes and, and all of that. And then also you'll see too, we'll, we'll dive in here, but, uh, some new sidewalk potentially, uh, would help with some connectivity and safety. Uh, so let's go to the next one. I believe we have a rendering here. So this is looking kind of northeast. And some of those crossing enhancements, you'll see that cycle track, uh, with kind of a uh, bollard separated, uh, treatment. You know, this could be a lot of different styles. There could be planters. There's resin planters that could be used. Uh, we're also showing some more kind of street furniture, trash cans. Uh, and then maybe a bit more planting with some trees to provide that shade, uh, along, along the way. So here's where I was mentioning that, you know, some of that new sidewalk could be that purple line. Currently there's no sidewalk here. Um, when folks are trying to cross over and all, they have to make a decision to cross multiple locations. There really is not a curb return on that northeast corner, corner near FedEx. So where that number three is, we thought that could be a place making opportunity. There is some city property there. Um, it's not all owned by the property owner. And then at least just bringing a curb, uh, or at least a sidewalk connection along this stretch up to, uh, Johnson Drive, we think could be pretty critical. Even when there, you know, I, I think one of the things I was thinking through is like, when there is a farmer's market or an event, you know, we know folks are parking over here and they're making that crossing, um, over Noll. And currently they're, they're kind of winging it. So creating that space would be useful for that. Uh, then also the opportunity to kind of stripe out that trail. So it'd be known that the trail does extend along the south side of, of Martway. So it could be an opportunity to kind of paint that out. There could be stamped concrete, uh, other things of that nature. But also some kind of signal improvements. You could do a leading pedestrian interval that allows the pedestrian to actually cross before left turners. So oftentimes they're simultaneous and people taking a left may not realize there's someone crossing and, uh, may make a collision. Uh, also there's other technology that's available now to actually have it automatically go off when a pedestrian's there. So you didn't have to push the button. So just some other safety considerations, um, at this, uh, intersection. Yeah. So I'll just call it a couple of these quickly, you know? Even street trees is a traffic calming thing that adds that visual friction, um, speed tables. We looked at that kind of on Outlook earlier, Refuge Islands. This one, I, I don't think we, for, for this improvement, have a refuge island, but on the median alternative, we did. And then the RRFBs, which is that rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Um, and I know the city has, has used some of these kind of different signs like that bottom right one, the high visibility crosswalks, you know, those are pretty low cost, easy to put up in the street. Right. So wayfinding. So the key, the key here was making sure that there's a different style. There's kind of this larger sign that could be used to communicate, um, history about a place could be used to have some science education, talk about, you know, the old, um, trail crossings. I mean, there's a lot of history here. But also could kind of provide that map context, whereas more of a singular post could be kind of more sporadic to kind of give you more updates. And then we even talked about kind of a more subtle engraving style that could give you like, you know, here's the mile marker that I'm at so that you have some of that keyed in information. Also carrying with that mission branding theme, that Rock Creek theme, um, all to kind of communicate this holistic approach. All right. So for funding, before we get into that, the cost benefit analysis that we did really looked at, um, trying to put things into kind of whole numbers. We did like a one to $4 signs per element, kind of magnitude of scale, thousand to, you know, a million. Um, and then we evaluated each kind of component against the project goals of transportation, green infrastructure and like public amenities slash programming. Things ended up being fairly tied between two, both alternatives. So that kind of made it hard to pick, but also that helped us kind of piece things together a bit more, uh, coherently. And then looking at the next slide, some of the funding opportunities. So as Kerry mentioned, this was through the PSP planning process, which some of those funding, you know, it's the TA fund and mitigation of congestion, CMAC funds. Some additional ones that we found that might be appropriate for this implementation would be the Sunflower Grant. There's some FEMA funds available as well. The, there's another round of marked PSP projects that are coming up. It's another opportunity to either further design this. But to be fair, I think we've got it pretty well designed too at this point. Um, and then I think a bigger one to look for would be some of the SS4A implementation grants. Uh, for some of those safety improvements, the Martway. Um, I know the city's uh, applied for that already. So that, that should be considered in this moving forward for implementation. Um, and then there's, there's a ton. I was just at a, a KDOT road safety audit training yesterday and I, I saw a list of like 40 other grant opportunities that I hadn't even heard of. Uh, so there's, there's a lot out there and it's always kind of changing, but, um, for transportation and, and active transportation, the, the feds and the state has been doing a lot more. So yeah, I think that was the last slide that we had. So, yeah.
Question, and I may have missed it in here. Did we address lighting at all along the pathway? And I must've missed it.
Yeah, I, I missed mentioning it. It's, it's in the plan and you can't quite see it on the plan view. But definitely we heard that is a huge need, especially kind of near Outlook. Yeah, yeah.
Opening up those spaces too would help with somewhat with that feeling of being isolated, but having, having more open space over there that is currently open.
So would you have something comparable to street lights or would they be the small lights or what?
We did explore that somewhat. I mean, I think there's, there's costs associated with the really small ones. Those can add up pretty quick. Vehicular lighting, you know, it's a whole different game, but yeah, finding some kind of pedestrian sconces at maybe a 200 foot interval would be a bit more appropriate. Uh, it kind of depends on, I, I mean, it, I think it could be incorporated into probably plaza locations primarily, and that could be pretty sufficient. I don't know if it necessarily has to be along the whole trail.
That might be some of the implementation grant funding to kind of come up with some more of those details.
Like solar lighting, if we had enough sunlight, Josh could probably talk to us about that at some point.
But yeah, photo metrics and even just engineering of some of this, like the bridges and things like that might come out of some of the implementation grant funds.
Thank you.
Um, I, hi. Um, I am just wondering, I, I know that we're still in a bit of a conceptual phase and there's more design to be done. I'm just curious with the, the dollars. Um, and how you guys, you know, got to, got to that assessment and if there's, I, I know that things will probably have to be, or potentially be trimmed down to fit actual, you know, budget of what we might have available or what funding is looking possible. Just curious if there's a general range, if we were to say this is exactly what we want to do, just like this, if there's a general idea of how much that would cost.
Gut feel? Hmm. There you put me on the spot there. Well, I think I'd go back to, you know, the design process and where we're at, like, this is really that kind of like five to 10% design that, you know, I would say you'd get a better understanding of like that full cost at like a, definitely a 30% design when things, when there's a survey and, you know, start getting better calculations. You know, there. Yeah.
I think we talked about too, that, um, the complete streets concept with the cycle track might cost close to like, let's say 1.5.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking for the, the complete street portions. Uh, but also, you know, you know, as a urban planner, transportation planner, I'm not as familiar with the built structure, like, you know, how much that. So I think your guys' process going through Mohawk Park could inform some of that to get a better understanding of local costs, those relationships you have with builders and constructors. Yeah, I think too, the, it depends on the phasing of how you do it as well. Be probably most cost efficient if it was all done in one chunk. Or at least like the trail portions. However, you know, it might be better to do little bits as they come up. For example, like the dogway stations or hydration hubs, uh, might be an easier lift. So thinking about it in maybe locational areas too, I mean, maybe it doesn't have to be all phased at once. You could do phased by this location right here. Like we're going to add a gateway. Or maybe we're going to go through and do wayfinding. Cause they're all kind of from different buckets.
Uh, I know we just recently went through the road diet project on Johnson Drive and we striped. I get that it can maybe be hard to swallow then that, oh, let's go through this process again. That said, uh, I do still hear anecdotally from some of the businesses that it's a struggle for people to cross the street. I've witnessed it. Um, so what I loved to see was the concept of taking away that third lane, making it more cyclist friendly, which I think will have the added benefit of just slowing the traffic down on Johnson Drive and just even without the addition of extra signals or extra lights, the fact that the traffic is going to have to slow down should make it a lot easier for folks to cross. So I was excited to see that as a potential plan.
Yeah, but this is Martway, not Johnson Drive.
I'll take it there.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to be clear about that.
Something that we did on Johnson Drive as well, that ones that could help with crossing as well. If you're someone who has less mobility or a slower walker, something like that, that you'd be able to kind of take refuge in the island.
I mean, I'll be totally honest. I would love to see this particular plane on Johnson Drive and remove the, the turn lane. Just go down to two lanes, protect cyclist traffic and slow the traffic down, but it's at Martway. Like I said, all, any improvement is an improvement.
I'm gonna go opposite of that. Um, I think that we should kind of wait and see once the apartments are there and people have moved in with the traffic looks like on Martway i- in reality, um, maybe before taking away the turn lane. I know that I'm a fairly patient driver, but I find it takes a long time to get on to Johnson Drive, even turning right. So although I, you know, obviously like the idea of making things more, more safe and bikeable and, and all of that kind of good stuff. I think we have to deal with traffic that we have and what we will have when, when the new apartments are built and, and everyone moves in. Oh, but one other thing, I do love the idea of, of putting a sidewalk on that north side, right there at that corner of, of Martway and all, cause there, there's no real discernible walkway and it is very dangerous.
I know we're a little all over the place, just in terms of thoughts and feedback, but there's a lot of good stuff in here. So to be expected. But just one thing I'd share that I'd love to see, you know, as staff goes back and it sounds like there's a whole other design process that'll have to happen next, based on what staff realizes is possible. One thing that I would say of all of these elements that I would love to see prioritized are those shade structures at the market site. Yes, of course, the trail improvements, but you know, that's something I think we've been talking about for 10 years. There were even renderings 10 years ago. I think maybe not quite 10 years ago, but I think, you know, I pulling in those things that are just kind of leftover forgotten things from over time and, you know, giving them that fresh feel. I'd, I'd love to see that piece prioritized.
And just as we move into the phased process of the, the whole conceptual plan, I'd like to ensure that our, our sustainability commission is included because they have some phenomenal ideas about how to do things in a sustainable manner.
I just have a closing comment. I, this is mainly for council, you know, we do these exercises where we envision what do we want the city to look like in five years, 10 years, 15 years? You know, you write a postcard to a friend, come visit Mission. It's exactly this kind of stuff that is the draw for me. And this is the city I want to live in and I want to get this done. So. I want to move here now, so. Well, thanks so much, uh, for hearing, hearing about.
Well, thanks so much, uh, for hearing, hearing about the project and looking forward to seeing what comes next. So thank you.
Before you close, um, I, I would just like to, I know, uh, Carrie introduced and Brian asked Carrie to introduce, but Brian and Carrie have done a phenomenal job in sort of leading and shepherding this process through and sort of making sure that the visions and, and plans that have been, um, out there for many, many years were thoughtfully incorporated as they went through this process. So we appreciate that.
Laura, are there any further comments or discussion in this work session? All right. Well, it is six fifty-two. This brings our work session to close. We will resume our regular governing body, uh, legislative meeting at seven PM. So I guess we're on a break for a few minutes.